This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to the Monterey Select Board. Our chairman is under the weather today and has saved us all from his potential disease vectors by coming in remote. So I'm sort of acting chair, me. We will convene this meeting of the Monterey Select Board at 6:01 in Monterey Town Hall. With me here tonight are Justin Maycock, the chair remotely, Susan Cooper, acting chair, and Frank Abbott, along with our commissary Roger, and it looks like many of the members of the Monterey Community Center Board. So why don't we start with that since it's the first thing on the agenda?
Okay.
Justin, do you have anything to add? You look like you were thinking of saying something.
Looks pale.
No, just get right into it. I think Lori is, it looks like Lori is there.
Yeah, she is.
Thank you, thank you Lori. Do you want to get started?
I do, thank you.
You want to speak from there? You want to sit at the table?
I can speak from here. I think, yeah, that's fine. So I received an email last week from RJ Supa, the director of the community center, saying that he was resigning. It was very distressing to hear that news because he has done such an excellent job in the 16 months that he has, has been the director. But the reason why he was resigning was even more distressing to me. The issues were around salary parity that were not addressed adequately, and he felt undervalued and disrespected. So this is my understanding of the situation. RJ and I met with Roger in July and discussed a comparison of salaries from different towns from a report that was put out by the town of Great Barrington. And for a comparable position in various towns, the salary ranged from $24 to $38 an hour. RJ was making $20 an hour. So the, it was, we had just started the new fiscal year. There didn't appear to be much that we could do about it right then. But we, we decided that we would try to address this for the upcoming budget. So, um, this fall, I don't know exactly when, an administrative, administrator position, administrative assistant position, excuse me, was posted through the Monterey Town Hall for a salary of $22 an hour, which is $2 an hour more than, than RJ was making. This was pretty insulting because his position consisted of program development, scheduling, public relations, overseeing the property, compiling statistics, financial management, and maintaining the website, among many other things. So, uh, I had sent this concern to Roger. Roger referred, and correct me if I'm wrong Roger, Roger referred RJ to Eileen Marcus from the Finance Committee. There was a lot of delay in getting some sort of an answer. But on November 13th, the Finance Committee met, and the draft of their minutes for that meeting state that priority is given to physicians that promote health and safety. Now, if the community center and the Council on Aging are not organizations or town committees that promote health and safety, you know, that's just absolutely ridiculous. Both of them provide opportunities to socialize, to exercise, to learn new things. That's health and safety. The other parts of the minutes said that, suggested that we increase revenues from the Monterey Community Center to fund salary increases. Now, I, I think that we're all pretty much in agreement that we're not going to go out and ask people to fund their salaries. Should we be asking Roger to have a bake sale to have his salary? I, I think that's absolutely ridiculous. And the premise of the Monterey Community Center has always been access for the people in Monterey. There are some things that we charge for when there are materials involved or special people come from out of town, they want to promote a program. There are some fees, but by and large, everything is free and open to, to everyone. The third suggestion from the Finance Committee was to combine the position with other roles. And so, again, my understanding was that there was some discussion with RJ about perhaps taking on the administrative assistant position for $22 an hour, but his community center commission position would not be increased. It would stay at $20 an hour. So RJ has resigned. His, his decision is final. He's made that very clear. And so there are two issues that I think we need to address going forward. One is how are employees in this town treated? And how are their work and their contributions valued? And secondly, now what happens to the Monterey Community Center Director position? Will that be posted? How much are you going to post for that salary? You know, is that going to be any different than what, what we have now? So that is what I am putting forward to you. I would appreciate any clarification of, of what I just said. You know, I may have misunderstood something. But I think you can see that we here as a group are all very, very unhappy about this situation. And we are looking to you for some input on that.
I'll start. You know, fundamentally, I disagree with Eileen's thing. If you go out and put them up where I needed to get paid for this, from a select board member, they would be dead on the line. I just don't believe that.
There is unanimity on the select board.
I didn't see it until I got the email. Yeah, so it was the first I heard of it, but no, that ain't gonna happen.
Right.
That's not gonna happen. We don't do that to anybody else, and we're not gonna do it to them.
I'm not even sure it's legal, actually.
Yeah.
I think there are legal issues.
It's, it's not, it's in, that person taking a position like that and not cooperating with the select board, I don't want to bother them too. Okay, you know, they're speaking for themselves. I, I'm not even 100% sure, based on the email I got, you know, the other finance committees, Steve and Jeff aren't even caught. I don't know if they knew about it. So, I don't know, it's definitely working in a vacuum. So, you know, that, that's just not gonna happen from my perspective as a select board member, you know. So that's the one issue. You asked, you know, the position will be posted. You know, we, we, you know, when we submit the budget, you know, that's tend to be, we're stuck in that budget, you know, for the year. I don't, I don't know how much creativity we have and what we, what we could do to change that. It was like the Council of Aging, Lynn, that with us about to pay for their individual. And we talked about it, you know, to bring it at the next budget, you know. I don't, I think, speaking for myself, I believe in the parity. We know that labor's increasing because there's a labor shortage. It's, it's an everyday thing. You know, I can't remember, you know, what we did to budget, what those numbers were at. But I'm not sure moving forward exactly what we can do in the short term. I know what we can do in the long term, you know, in front of there. And, you know, I will, speaking for myself, I apologize if that email ever went out. That's not something I believe in.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And unfortunately, that's what was told to RJ, and he took that as gospel.
Yeah, but I, well, I'm interrupting you. There's things we can learn from this experience from RJ. Okay, you know, that's when I read through all the documentation the last couple days. You know, we, we had, I think the board in the last few years has tried to make things more competitive. We know we're out there competing. And for whatever reason, this fell through the cracks. You know, I can understand why RJ feels the way he feels. I wouldn't deny that to him. But, you know, it's a lesson, you know, a lesson to learn. Like, I'm not, and it's easy to be in hindsight. You know, Lynn came up here and talked to us about it, and we met her. She sat right there, okay, this is what we can do. We are a little bit, we're locked a little bit, but we want the parity when we go to, to the next budget. We talked about it. So, you know.
I think, to me, there's at least one clear administrative, I'd call it an institutional failure in that I talked to RJ at length today. And I feel like when the HR director left, we began a contract with Collins Center, and they've been helpful in some regards, but there are certain aspects of HR there. Just, they're basically, that's not what they do. And I think that we need to consider getting an HR consultant that's willing to serve in those other capacities because I feel like the onboarding wasn't very, wasn't adequate. And I had concerns about this in general, about onboarding. I feel like a lot of people that come to work for municipality, I, I didn't really understand how the new budget worked before I had to do it. And I, even after the first year, I can't say that I felt completely competent about it. But, you know, in the private sector, even if you work for a nonprofit, usually you have a review date that's part of your, when you were hired, for the anniversary of your hire, and then a raise is based sort of on that and that performance with you. But it's not like that in a public sector. It's just not, right? Some places do have an annual review that's based on your, when you were hired. But a lot of times, you're, like, if it's a big town or a big city, they have a pot of money that's set aside for those. But most small towns operate on raises happen on the annual cycle with the annual budget. A lot of towns basically give COLA and don't even do, do performance, they have performance evaluations to decide if they're gonna fire someone, but they often don't have what we think of as merit pay. They might have, what are they, steps, I guess they're called, where if you have a big department and you have levels in the department, you start at one level and then you can progress through the levels, but then you reach that top level and that's kind of, you're stuck there at COLA after that. So with small towns, you usually don't even get that, right? So we have a process where basically we put in, two years ago, performance reviews to allow for the possibility of performance-related merit of some kind, whether it was a merit bonus, which is like a one-time thing, but doesn't necessarily roll into a salary increase forever, or a salary increase. And we haven't used it so far because there are difficulties with actually doing it. But the reality of our budget cycle is that having hired in October, it is 18 months before that's likely to be seen. The only option would have been to roll a potential raise in for the first, like, if they had submitted a budget, if you guys had submitted a budget. And I don't know how you would have known this either. You had submitted a budget for the MCC last fall that included a raise for the director beyond COLA in the, in July 1, right? With the next fiscal year, that might have happened, right? So we also have to learn from that, that we need to make sure that we're planning for raises for our people in the budget if we think it needs to happen. Because it's not possible, this isn't like a public, a company where you can just go, sure, we'll find the money somewhere. If we were to give person A a raise, we literally are taking money from somewhere else. Someone has to not get a piece of equipment they budgeted for. Unless you, someone left and we have extra money, money in a salary line because we have an employee department.
We do now.
We do now. But if we hired someone next week, it wouldn't be an appreciable amount of money. If it takes us three months to hire someone, then there would be more money because it's already there in that pool. So, but the reality is, it's very difficult usually to find that money because you literally are robbing Peter to pay Paul. It's just not, it's not possible. There's a small reserve fund for emergencies, but we've had to use that for actual emergencies. And it's hard to decide that, like, a raise for somebody is more emergent than, say, we needed $30,000 worth of tree work because a hurricane dumped a bunch of trees on the roads and people can't drive. That, I'm kind of done. I mean, I, I think that, to me, the institutional need is to recognize, to make sure that everybody understands what the cycle is and that as employees are brought on, it's clear to them how that process works. So they understand the system and have realistic expectations and so that money can get put aside in budgets for people to have raises. The second issue, of course, is that I think it isn't so much, to me, it's not so much a matter of parity, it's a matter of competitiveness. That there are, we did a bunch of raises for highway departments because we were very aware of how not competitive the salaries were, and we were gonna lose people to other positions. And I think that's now an issue for a bunch of other positions. And we need to address that in this budget cycle, for sure. Steve?
Stephen Moore. I would like to just drop back for a minute and talk about this question of, in some way, linking revenue to director salary. And I hear that the three of you are unanimous that there, there should be no linkage. But I would like to have something in the minutes as well. And so I'd like to make a point that the community center, first off, was a gift. So the property and the building was given to the town. Secondly, the renovation was a gift by hundreds of people in town, including Wendy and myself, who gave money to afford it. Thirdly, it was a gift because there were hundreds of hours of donated labor, including my own time, to, to build it. And at no point did it ever cross anybody's mind that the purpose would be to generate revenue. And we have a perfect example. Friday, there is going to be a program on American chestnuts. And this is the third year. The first year, I think there were maybe 12 or 15 people at the community center to see the presentation. Last year, there were a few people outside. This afternoon, Julie Kern said, "The first presentation of a video is booked solid, and so we're gonna have a second screening at 4 o'clock." Now, should the community center have said, "Oh, goody, we can charge $5 apiece for this"? No, they shouldn't have done that. It's, it's to provide access for a community to see friends, to make friends. And I just really want to drive a nail in this idea that the community center should be generating revenue. We don't expect the park commission to generate revenue, except maybe for the kayak tracks. And we don't expect library to be generating revenue. And similarly, we don't expect the highway department or the police department or the fire department to be generating revenue. This is all done as a service to the residents and people in the area. And so I really hope this never surfaces again as a talking point about the community center. And it would be interesting to know if that was just a single person voicing because that's, that's tricky in town. Do you speak for the whole committee or do you speak for yourself? And I was very involved in trying to make sure that was all clear when I was doing the paper. And then here's an example where somebody might have been speaking in one way, but not really representing the committee. So I just hope that never comes up again.
I, I think that's not gonna, well, I can't say it will never get raised again. But I, I should let, do you want to offer your thoughts also so that there's clarity that it's consistent? Because I, I basically, my view is the community center is a center for the community and that the offerings there should be, absolutely should be free to the...
It's a service oriented thing.
Yes, it should be free to the residents of Monterey, but probably, as most community centers are, open to others. I mean, the Lenox Community Center, we charge for the dance because you have to pay for the band and the people that come there know that, right? Like, I never felt bad about being, contributing to that. And it's not that you guys were making money, it's that you paid for the hall.
And we pay rent for the hall, but that's appropriate as well.
Right. So if you're renting the hall out to a big function, you probably do charge that. That's fair. But, but I, so I completely agree. Like, I don't think that the community center should be charging except in circumstances like that. Justin?
Yeah, Steve Moore, you make a good point. And I think I agree with what Frank initially said, that that is, the select here fundamentally and unanimously disagrees with some of the things that were said by the Finance Committee Chair. I don't know if that was the opinion of the Finance Committee or just one member. But we actually spoke about it, believe it or not, last week's meeting, at which we unanimously agreed that we didn't have, didn't agree with that idea at all. It was a very unfortunate thing and I, my apologies for the way that it unfolded. And there was not always clear communication between all involved parties. And there was some mixed messaging. Certainly, there was almost a rogue Finance Committee that was saying things that really should have come from the select board and that the select board didn't, didn't agree with. Because at the end of the day, the select board, you know, is the employer. And apologies that there were messages that were sent that the select board absolutely does not agree with.
So I, where I think, I can definitely say I'm sorry to hear these things. I do think that, I was talking to Roger today. I, I already thought, before this happened, I already thought that we needed to reconsider the hourly wage for at least three of the positions in town. For one thing, I mean, it's, it's happened before. We were offering a lower wage for the transfer station and shockingly, we weren't getting any applicants. And when we raised the wage, we got some applicants. And we're in an okay place now, but I think this is a cyclical thing that you have to periodically really be honest with yourself. I mean, as we get older, we get sticker stuff, right? Like, you know, I remember what it cost to buy a, a nice, whatever, picture thing, a rig roast, a dress, or whatever, when I was in my twenties. That is not what we're paying now. And at some point, it can feel weird to say, well, the hourly minimum wage is $15. Well, $7.50 nationally, right? It's $15 in Massachusetts. Yeah, I know, $7.50. I didn't realize that, that the US minimum wage is $7.50. It's inconceivable to me. But I, at $15, you won't get employees at $15 right now in Berkshire County. And I'm not sure you should because you can't live on $15 an hour. I'm sorry.
Jerry? Was anybody thinking about the fact that you're posting the assistant's job for $2 an hour more than you're paying your director? I mean, that is an insult to start with. If I was that person, I would have quit that minute. So if we're not getting an assistant, why can't we give RJ some of that money that we were gonna pay an assistant, go with our assistant till the next budget comes up?
That's nice of you to say, but we've already got issues arising from not having that help as a town. So I'm not on board with that, sorry Jerry.
Then why did somebody even think that it was okay to give an assistant more money than a director?
Because we've had to increase the amount to try to get applicants.
Yeah, I think, Jerry, you, you bring up a good point. At some of the, if you take a big picture, look at the organization, we don't have a salary chart and, and we aren't always reviewing as often as we should. You may or may not know that we've been looking for someone to fill kind of an office assistant, administrative assistant position for about three years, I think. With almost no success, we had one person that filled that position for a couple of months, and then another part-time employee that took on some of that role at one point. So I was definitely involved in, in trying to go up to 22 for that position. And when we did it, I don't think we took a look at what is everyone else being paid in town. I think we just said, "We're having a really difficult time hiring at this rate. Maybe we need to bump the rate up so we can hire this position that we've tried to hire on and off for a few years." So that was an oversight. One thing that we could definitely do more of is take a look at the whole organization and at all the salaries and at the surrounding communities. And we've done that to varying degrees, and we missed the mark here. But I was in, I was definitely involved raising that position. And the sole reason was we just couldn't find anyone at the rate that we were hiring for.
And the likelihood seems high to me that we'll have that same problem with the MCC. And like, I'm gonna draw something that is not gonna be popular with this crowd, I know. But I, I actually have concerns with titling that position director. And I, I know why it was done, and I feel like it was done to make it, to add gravitas to it. But I do think it may, it may encourage applicants to see the nature of the position a bit differently than realistic, right? To me, a director is a director of an organization. They probably, they have oversight over more budget, more people, and more responsibility than I think this particular position is. I'm not downplaying its value, I'm trying to be realistic, right? We're not, a director is not gonna be in charge of 40 staff. He's not a project rector for a $10 million budget. He's not, right? He's running a, a small community's community center. And that doesn't devalue the need in the community. But I think that someone who applies for a position that's titled director may have expectations that aren't in line with a town of 900's community center. That's like, a 10-hour a week job might indicate that maybe it's not, you know, the direct red of a major organization.
I think you would need to find a way to make a distinction then. Because if somebody's an administrative assistant, they would come in for scheduled hours, they'd get in their car, and their job is done. The role of currently titled director for the community center, well, just ask Mary. You know, she was hired for five hours and she was there all the time. It's, it's a role that involves checking emails throughout the day, throughout the week, being, being available quite often. It's a much more fluid kind of position than an office position where you show up to schedule hours. So if there's a decision not to call it a director, you'd need to find some way so that you're distinguishing between the, the nature of the work for those two different kinds of jobs. And I would say the process of having to track a lot, I mean, that was a big part of what I did with the paper. I had to track so many things going on. And it's, it's kind of every day, all day kind of responsibility.
It's actually helpful to hear about the nature of the job because at the end of the day, if we're gonna try to set comparable salaries, or I will call it even comparable, we're trying to set reasonable wages for different positions, the only way you can really do that is to have a better understanding of what the people actually do. Because otherwise, how do you evaluate what the market for that is even? Or what you, you know, some of it's also what we can afford. But yeah, your point is well taken that it has a, a much more fluid, it tends to. I don't know. I feel like I can't, we actually all come from a generation where volunteer activities, like, it was originally a volunteer thing that she did, that then she then got paid for. But we all come from a generation where volunteer activity was, I'm not gonna say expected, but common in so many, right? How many schools were running on parent involvement as volunteers? How many things that we're familiar with were, the fire department was largely, was volunteer for a really long time. And we're now entering age where that's less and less the case. And I think that we have to start, we made a society that's monetized everything. And we have to accept that the consequence of that is that things that were once volunteer, that people did willingly in their spare time because they were committed to it are now paid jobs. And that in order to get quality people who want to participate in that, they're, they know they're not going to be paid what they might really be worth. But you still have to pay them enough to make it worth their while. And that's kind of how I'm seeing some of these things.
And you have to appreciate that when you pay somebody, then you have a certain amount of leverage and oversight. When you have all volunteer organizations, somebody can walk away tonight free and clear. So there's a value in having a, a paid structure and having a title and in having formal expectations, even if they're rather dispersed the way it is for the community center.
You guys got anything else?
Just where do we go from here? When, when do you post the position? What, what is the procedure? I mean, the last time when we hired RJ, we did have an HR person for about ten minutes. And she did the, you know, the, the majority of the work.
Right.
We, we sat down, we wrote a job description, we just had, just wrote a, an advertisement. She, she arranged all the interviews. We did the interview, she checked all the references. Who's doing that?
That's a good question. I think probably the Select Board's gonna have to go discuss if we have the money to get the Collins Center to do that and whether we think that will work. I assume there is the, I would, I would suggest, and I don't know if the other board members are on board with this, that you guys look at that job description and decide whether you want to make any alterations to it. Because I definitely am not going to be able to look at that and say whether it needs to be tweaked. But you might have a much better view of whether you think it accurately reflects what RJ does and, and what you'd like that position to be. So you're in a much better position to tweak it to reflect what you want that job to be than we are. Whatever we title it, the content of what the job is, right? You guys know what he was doing. I think the other thing that's important for us to know is that that job also involved grant writing, which no one mentioned tonight, but I want to put out there too. Because I didn't know it till RJ told me that in our conversation. And I think that's another thing that distinguishes that position from administrative assisting. Is that, that, you know, going out there and finding artists to, whether they're performing artists or whatever kind of artists they are, is, is one type of thing. But writing grants to support bringing those people in is another type of thing. And they're all different roles that that person serves. And they add to clarity on what's required of a person in that position. And maybe the next person would have different skills and do it a little differently, of course. But I think you're in the best position to look at that and decide if it needs tweaking. Because if it doesn't, then we don't have to rewrite it.
To answer one part of your question, we have been using the Collins Group to help us find employment. We budget a certain amount of hours every month for them. We could check and see where we are with them and get that going, you know? That's how we've been doing it. We do it with the town administrator. But sometimes we've had to yell at them to get their attention. You know, we can put the energy to do that.
I hope they would work very closely with this committee.
Yeah, I think that we can, we can make that a requirement. That's not a problem.
And it's also, you guys can also think about if you want to be, do you want the, them to bet? Assuming you have a job description you like and they're willing to work with us and post it. The next question would be, do you want to be involved in screening all the applicants? Or do you want them to screen the applicants and just pass on ones that are first, like second round interviews to you guys? That's, you don't have to answer it, think about it, but that would be the next question they would ask us. So first time around, we asked them to do all the screening. We're thinking that we put it out there again, we might be likely to be involved in the first round screening ourselves. But yeah, so, did I miss anything?
No, I, I think what Frank and Susan, you both said, pretty well answers Lori's question. I just want to reiterate, Lori, that we'll definitely emphasize your involvement and the committee's involvement in reviewing the job description. And what did you do last time? Did just you sit in on interviews or were there a couple community center representatives that sat in on interviews?
I sat in on the first interview. And then we had a number of people from the committee do a second interview.
And the town administrator.
And the town administrator, right.
So maybe we'll, maybe we'll follow a somewhat similar process, if that works for you all, where Lori, you might be involved in the first round of interviews. And then if it comes down to a couple of finalists, other committee members might be involved.
Okay.
Another thing to, I mean, we're gonna have to look at numbers too. But another thing to ponder is to think about, the budget cycle is coming, right? This is the end of November, January is the budget cycle. So this is the perfect time to ponder what you think that, that wage ought to be. And at that point, obviously, we couldn't hire a new person at that wage, but they could be informed. I mean, we did this with Roger, that he had one wage when he was hired and then another wage when the new budget cycle came through, right? And then we can budget for that, so. It's not ideal, but it could be several months before we have somebody, so then it's not that long.
Well, that creates quite a bit of work for the rest of us in that time. You know, RJ so effortlessly did this job that, you know, there's a lot to pick up in the meantime.
I get it. I'm just trying to be realistic about expectations of how easy it is to hire somebody based on the absentee in the office.
If, Lori, I don't know if this would help at all, but if there's anyone who's willing to step in to fill some or all of that role as an interim and potentially skip, you know, the hiring, well, not skip the hiring process, delay it, not delay it even, but hire an interim to help do those duties in between directors. I'm just throwing that out there if it would make your and everyone else's lives easier. We have that option.
Okay, that's a thought.
If you think of anyone who would be interested as an interim.
Okay.
Kyle Pierce. I think Lori has realized that we're stuck in a position and has gone to you with what do we do now? I think the rest of us, speaking for myself, are angry. And I, I knew I was not going to come here without saying that I was angry and I was going to try not to swear. This didn't need to happen, this shouldn't have happened. And I don't know if an apology to RJ would do something, I don't know. I mean, it won't bring him back, but what I'm saying is, this is not something that should have happened. We should be here.
I'm not going to disagree with you, because I agree with you. I, I, I don't disagree. And I, I certainly personally made that clear to RJ today, but that's not the same as the board and the whole.
I get it.
I, I agree with you. I'm not happy and I'm not really, I'm trying to think what to do to, there's two pieces. One is an apology to him, the other is, I don't want something like that to happen again.
Right.
But it can be hard to figure out how to make that happen, right? Like, it, other people's choices aren't easily controllable. You can bear, some of us can barely control our own actions, never mind those of other people. So I, I'm not going to disagree with you, but we're talking about the actions of an elected individual, so.
A refresher on open meeting law would help a lot. Because I think the open meeting law is pretty clear about how you voice as a board versus how you voice as an individual.
I, I will say, and I, unfortunately, no one ever sent me this set of emails, so I haven't had the opportunity to look at it. But I will say that it's also my experience that even if it does get voiced, sometimes it doesn't get heard. I mean, I myself certainly had, have had the situation where I, I tried to be extremely clear that I was expressing my personal opinion and not that of the board, but it wasn't taken that way. I can't say what happened in this case, because I wasn't there and I haven't had the opportunity to read what was said. But it certainly couldn't hurt.
I think it might be nice if there were a letter to RJ from the Select Board just, you know, saying that you regret this, that he was not undervalued, that he did a wonderful job and it was an unfortunate series of events.
I, I think it definitely was. And I know I'd be willing to write something and let the Select Board edit it. But I'm happy to alter something and then we can tweak it.
I think so. Does anybody else have anything to say?
Well, I would just like to say that, Elaine Lynch, I was hoping to come tonight to hear a compromise of some sort, to keep him. He is made, well, no, but to offer this job again and I'm hearing, okay, it's going to be put out to get other people. I can't see we can get somebody of his quality, his personality and his enthusiasm and I'd just like if we could put our heads together and find a way to keep him.
I, I would love that. I will say that in my conversation with him today, he made very clear that he wouldn't even consider it. That doesn't mean we can't offer again, just to let him know that we're serious. But what he expressed to me, and I think Lori was nodding there, that, that he's not really willing to consider that. And I, you know, I have to, he did use the words, people aren't respecting my choice. And I have to respect that, right? Like, if, if you make a choice that you feel is the right thing for you, you want people to accept that choice, even if they're unhappy with it. So I'm, I'm trying to value his choice, even though I would really prefer to try to find a way to keep him.
Would there be a possibility, some organizations would hire independent contractors to do work? Would there be the possibility of a twenty-two dollar per hour independent contractor coming in?
And it's, rather than, how is it, like, wasn't RJ essentially an independent contractor?
I, I don't know.
No, he was a town employee, but I don't, I don't know.
So if, if the town said, we're gonna hire an independent contractor from now until June thirty-first? Or when the next fiscal year takes place?
How would that work in a different way?
You have to go back and look at the budget, because employment pay scale is taken to one, you're taking it out of another. If you don't have it in the budget for consulting. You know, you get into that issue that I'm not sure how it all works.
Well, independent contractors don't necessarily need healthcare or other benefits.
What do you feel the benefit would be versus hiring a person?
The benefit would, would be possibly getting the same skill from the same person. If that person turned around and said, oh, I could work for twenty-two hours an hour. I'd say. Without withholdings and et cetera.
Yeah, they'd have to do their own W.
I have to think about that one, because I'm not sure, no, I, I, I'm not opposed. I'm just not really sure what the implications are.
It's an opportunity to retain RJ.
That's a really good idea.
It is, although we still have to come up with the extra money, which we don't have in the budget.
Well, you'd be saving the money that, oh, he didn't get benefits, that's right, he was less than twenty hours, right?
Right.
Okay.
Anything else? Justin, you got anything else? No. So I, I, I'm not, I don't think anybody's happy. Right, I don't, I don't think anybody's happy, so. We're all sorry and I'm, I definitely feel like there's some changes we need to make to try to prevent a similar thing from happening again. I also feel like then something else will happen. But I, you know, that's, all you can do is fix the things that you can fix.
And I think that letter would be very helpful.
Certainly would hurt.
Yeah.
Thanks for the comment, guys, and I'm sorry about the outcome too. Firefighter appointments. We need to appoint Paul Rossiter and Nico Kara, Fire Chief, as firefighters. It's a one-year appointment for firefighter, yeah?
Indefinite appointment term, but with a probationary period as determined by the Fire Chief.
I'd make a motion if we appoint Paul Rossiter, Kara to a firefighter. With indefinite appointment, there's a probationary period.
I will say, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Justin, yes.
Subordination agreement. Lori, you guys maybe chat outside, so you don't get the joke yet.
I talked to her great time. So she's in, the person is in her fifth year of the, of grant. You know, it's for a roof, it's being handled by, you know, the bank financing. She's been good on all or other. If she was to default, the town wouldn't lose any. It's, they, it's, they would lose it. And she believes there's enough equity in the House that would be safe. So, you know, first I was like, wow, is this a good, something good to start, you know? But, you know, if you read the paperwork that I guess Roger sent out, part of the requirement is to keep the home up. You can't let it fall apart, you know? And it, you know, it says in the document, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar loan for a roof. And, you know, I, my personal belief is that we should sign it, you know?
I'm gonna second that. I mean, honestly, even if you take the twenty-five for the more, the roof mortgage plus what's owed to us, I mean, a garage in the town of Monterey would be worth that, worth more than that. So even if she were to default on the loan and they had to sell it to recover the amount, there's no way that, that either lender would.
She started off at thirty-five thousand, she's in her fifth year out of fifteen.
Right.
So she's a third of the way. And, you know, if you don't do it, you risk damaging more.
The building, exactly. Even though there's no benefit to the town, I don't think there's much risk to the town.
There's no risk to the town, because it wasn't our money that we gave, it just came through us.
So I.
Someone gave us money to give to her.
Yeah, I'm willing to agree to it.
All right. Would, Justin, you have any comment?
No, I agree.
All right, so I make a motion that we approve the subordination agreement.
Second. All in favor?
Justin, yes.
Susan, yes. The Lombardo land donation. Do you have any updates for us from your side, Justin?
So I sent out a draft deed.
Right.
Donna and I worked on it a little bit.
On the point three about the premise conveyed, where it says, notwithstanding there's prohibition, the town may move a pre-existing right-of-way easement from its current location to another location on the premise so long as the dimensions and the rights and uses are unchanged.
Yep.
I, I don't know how you, if you move it, how you move it, how you move it.
I I don't know how you, if you move it, how you do the dimensions. I mean, I you know, I.
I thought it was interesting, too. I was, I think the reason why that's in there is if we change the thirty-foot by thirty-foot parking space to fifty-feet by fifty-feet, they don't want that. But if we keep a ten-foot wide road and we move it, it's going to take different.
Yeah.
But I can, I can run that by and see if we can tweak that language.
I mean, this is the issue we brought up at the last Select Board meeting.
That's why it's in there. That whole sentence beginning, notwithstanding. That's because we brought up, we wanted to be able to move the right-of-way.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't put the.
I just feel it's like, it's like, how do you do, it's like, how do you do the dimension? Okay, I moved it over here and this is now, I I I don't know. I don't know if it'll ever come up because there's only one that has a pre-existing agreement.
I mean, what if we left out dimension? What if we set location to another location on the premises? As long as the rights of use are unchanged.
I think that would make sense.
Yeah. We'll just chat. Okay, now, just to check with Donna, because we still have some due diligence to do on the environmental side.
Yeah, I I know we have the due diligence on the environmental. I just, we'll, we'll get the deed. Like, if that's our only comment on the deed, I don't know. Lombardo hasn't seen the deed in in a while.
Who hasn't?
Lombardo, since we've made these changes. So if we're all consulted on about this particular change, and then we'll shoot it back to him, that it could still be weeks out, depending on how he comes back with it.
All right. Now, the other thing we talked about last week is the signage. I don't know who put the sign picture in the email. Did you see it?
Yeah, because the sign example isn't going to be attached to the deed. I don't think it is the guiding. But I'll tell you this, I reached out to Don Torrico about the size of the sign. And he said, he doesn't know for sure without seeing the sign, but it's likely a municipal information sign under the zoning bylaws, and those have no size limit.
Okay, okay, that's good, because here it says she'll pay three by four.
Yes, so that's larger than what's allowed in the Lake Shore District. It's larger than what's allowed in the Business District. But but it's likely allowed because it's a municipal information sign. Don obviously can't say that for sure without seeing the sign itself.
Right.
But he pointed me in that direction. Another thought is, do we want to make it at least, at least within the confines of the Business District? But I do know it's important to the landowner. I ran into him in Town Hall a couple of days ago, maybe yesterday. And that's in there specifically because, I think because he saw the red signs at each town park and Town Hall and whatnot, and he did want to do something different from those. So.
All right. Do you want to talk about the environmental stuff, Roger? You sent out an email. We talked to the Pine Ridge.
Yeah, so I talked to, uh, I I had a document of the, it was a old, uh, one of the Conservation Commission documents, and on it was, uh, a couple of names of of companies that had done work there back in the early two thousands to, uh, number one, and as well as through, um, Don Torrico, the building department, there were a couple of demolition permits. And so I called up the Pine Ridge Construction Company, which was listed on there, and they're still in business up in Hinsdale. I spoke to the owner, and he recalls the, um, he recalled the demolition. He also recalled that, um, there had been a, um, a company out of Worcester, he couldn't remember the name of them, he was kind of trying to get it, trying to get it to me, that came in to deal with some asbestos flooring in one of the buildings. And so there's that, that piece of it. I also talked to Mark Levassor from Foresight, who had done some preliminary, uh, design work for the Blue Herring Landing project. So I got some, uh, I got the NOI, the RDA, I think it's called, and also a map and a plan of the, of the area that they had drawn up. It does show some, some, uh, like, small septic systems. I don't know what kind they were, but there were a lot of buildings that were torn down, at least, at least probably eight, between seven and eight different structures that came down.
But I read they were only, the pine only tore down three, right?
Well, this one, well, no, that's, that's what's interesting, is that two of those permits were, out of three permits, two were demolition, and one was a renovation, actually, of one of the houses that were there. It was eventually torn down.
And none of them were for that, none of them were for that big building.
Yeah.
The maximum square footage that they tore down was, what, five?
Well, almost like six seventy, and one was five seventy.
Right, and that big building was more than that.
The main building was almost twenty-two hundred square.
Yeah, so.
And that was torn down by the Pine Ridge?
The Pine Ridge, yeah. He recalled, he recalled a lot of dumpsters. But he wasn't there for all of it, because I also asked him about, um, underground storage tanks, or oil, or even oil tanks. And he, he said there weren't any, or at least he didn't recall any. Then I was talking to Don Torrico about it, and Don, in doing some inspections there, um, that, uh, he actually had seen uh, oil tanks in the buildings, like he would normally have an oil tank. So he didn't know anything about the underground. And so, um, Mark Levassor from Foresight also gave me the name of a company out of, uh, I think it was West Springfield, called O'Reilly Talbot in Oakham, who do environmental analysis of of, um, properties. And speaking with her, she said that they essentially do what we started doing, which was with the health permits, the building permits, with the zoning, concom, planning, trying to find all those different, uh, files. And then, but they go a little more into depth because they go look at D E P and EPA, um, databases that because there was asbestos, there should be some permit, some documentation or record that, um, that happened. So hopefully that hap, hopefully, you know, I've engaged, I'm waiting for a quote from, from her. But that, they, they would not go in, the first thing they would not go in is start digging, digging spots and trying to analyze the soil. They would first look at all the documentation to determine if there was any red flags up in the documentation. Then they would say, the next phase of this could be to do this, and this is, this is what all the costs are associated with that. So that was everything that I found out.
You know, maybe talk to Sean about the.
Oh, and Sean, so I do have, I I'm waiting to hear back from Sean Tryon about, uh, if they have any documentation about, um, uh, any underground oil tanks or anything like that, because they would have that documentation there. So, so that's kind of where I am with all that information.
I'm kind of heartened to hear that Don remembered seeing, which means that they weren't buried, because that's a lot easier to do.
His, his, um, his description to me was that the, um, the tenants there were submitting a lot of, like, complaints.
Oh, you're right.
So. So both, yeah, so both Don and I think Jim Willets at the time was still working, was was down there as a, as a health inspector. They were going down there, so he was, he, he seemed to feel, it seemed like he was down there quite a bit early on in his career. And there were a lot of things in the files.
Go for it.
What, where are you at in getting the, uh, company that does the environmental review, Roger?
I I'm waiting to hear, I'm waiting to get a proposal from them. So I, I, I think I spoke with, I think it was Friday, I think it was, that I, that I spoke with her. I can't remember the date, but I was just waiting to hear back from her and and on that proposal. So I I don't think it was a lot of money, but I don't want to say that, you know, you don't know, you say that, next thing you know, it's.
Well, Donna, just going back a couple of weeks, Donna's, someone at Donna's firm had estimated roughly three thousand dollars or something for that first step.
Right, yeah, because it was a twenty-one E, and she actually mentioned twenty-one E when I, those twenty-one E assessments, she said the same thing on the phone, so. And I would, I just want to step back for a second with, with, um, Frank was saying about the easement, about the right-of-way, right-of-way. So if you look actually at the, uh, at the parcel maps, and even on, on the online, uh, the, the online access G I S we have at the town, there is a difference between the lane right-of-way and the road right-of-way. The lane right-of-way that they show, that's why I, I was just talking about dimensions and how those dimensions are carried. The lane right-of-way are, as it shows in these documents, is way, way bigger than the actual road right-of-way. The way, what, what the road takes up. So the road has got, you know, when you look on the map, you look on, on, uh, on the, uh, like, Google Maps or anything, or even on, even on the maps, the G I S that we have, it does show what would be the, what I guess would be a, um, a survey right-of-way for the road, but it also shows all this other space in the right-of-way that would have been, like, parking and things like that. So I, I just want to make sure that when we start talking about that, that we're talking about the road right-of-way and not all the right-of-way that may be listed in deeds or however else we're going to find out about that. Because I was just noticing that, that, when you spoke about that, for, you know, for example, there's dashed lines that make up the lane right-of-way, and then there's the Williams Street, the Williams Lane.
That's a good point. I didn't understand those complexities. Um, I think from the town's point of view, and when I'm talking with Donna, we'll try to keep it as flexible as possible. That way down the road, we can move things around as suits us and the abutter. Dean, the only reason there's restrictions is, in talking to Dean, he doesn't want the town giving away a part of the land, or lake frontage, or road frontage. So as long as we can make it flexible and suit his, his, uh, requirements, which also I don't think as a municipality, we'd be allowed to do anyway. We can't give away land. There's a whole procurement process, or reverse procurement, and it's complicated. There's a number of pieces of land we want to sell, and we haven't been able to, so. All that being said, we'll try to keep it as flexible as possible and working within what the request is.
Jerry? Yeah, talking about restrictions, I understand that the Lombardos have put restrictions on what the town can do with that property. I'd like to know, as a resident, what restrictions they're talking about.
The deed is, um, what it does, says is that it'd be used for, I don't know if I went near somewhere, it'd be used as passive.
Open space and passive recreation specifically for uses of town park or town beach.
Okay, wait, that passive. In other words, we talked about in the Parks Commission, nothing's official or anything. And right now, I'm talking as a resident, not from the Parks Commission. I was under the impression we couldn't put pickleball courts there, we can't, we wanted to put, we were thinking of maybe a dog park. You know, if the town is going to be restricted to another beach, we don't need another beach. It costs us thirty-five to thirty-eight thousand dollars a year for lifeguards. It costs us few thousand dollars a year for sand. First of all, we couldn't even get lifeguards for a second beach. The town might be in running a beach of about fifty thousand dollars a year in expenses, and I don't think the town needs another beach. So if this is what the Lombardos are saying, that we can only use that property for a beach, I don't see any benefit to the town taking that property. Because I'd really like to know what their restrictions are, and let them say, this is what you can do, and this is what you can't do. And if they're giving us a gift, they shouldn't have any option to say what we can do there. They can say recreation as opposed to housing or anything like that, but I don't think they should be telling us what kind of recreation the town desires, because we sent out a whole survey, the open space and recreation, and the people in this town who are paying the taxes want a certain amount of things for their recreation. And if these people who are donating the property say, you can't do that, I don't see where this property is worth the town taking.
Justin?
Just to offer a little insight, because I, I spoke with Dean yesterday, he actually likes the idea of a dog park. But to also offer a little more clarity, the restriction will ultimately be whatever is in the deed. And right now, it says basically what Frank and Susan read from the deed, it's going to be restricted to passive recreation as a park or town beach. So that's what the restriction would be. Um, he said explicitly that he doesn't want buildings other than a small, less than twenty-by-twenty building to house, like, picnic tables and other such things, or a bathroom, and he doesn't want athletic fields or courts. But we would be able to do anything that counts as open space, passive recreation, or town beach.
But I hear you, like, the flip side is, like, one way, whether it's a beach, like, we have at Garfield, or the option to have access to Lake Buell, I don't know, and what that access would involve is also unclear, because there's a lot of concom rules. Like, what we would ultimately do with this phase is a question. Um, it's also, it is an option for us to choose to move it on to a nonprofit whose mission is conservation. Should we so choose? Not, not for money, but, yeah, for preservation.
Is there an obligation on behalf of the current property owner to disclose in discovery any environmental issues?
I, that is a question that I've raised, and I, I personally feel like asking for an affidavit from the current owner regarding that would be at least wise, like, but of course, he can only tell us about what he knows about, and there may be issues that he legitimately doesn't know about, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know everything that happened on my property before I had it.
Yeah, and the other thought was, um, the first phase of, of doing some, uh, environmental work to determine if there was any hazardous material buried or otherwise spilled on the property, that's not where all the money is going to be needed to be paid for. It's in the actual sampling, water quality analysis, soil analysis, perhaps heavy equipment to do some digging. You know, that, that's going to be more expensive than three thousand dollars. So I guess the question is, would would the town consider asking some payment or sharing of the cost of that with the current owner to cut our costs down?
It's a good question.
Yeah, it is a good question.
Um, I think we'll have to play it as it goes. The first phase of this review is reviewing all the documentation, which Roger's getting the quote on. And if it comes back with all kinds of red flags, maybe that's where we stop, and we don't accept it. You know? Because it, maybe it's in no one's best interest to spend however much money it costs to do all the excavation and testing. So if it comes back without significant problem, then I think we would take that as though our concerns were addressed and we did our due diligence.
Sure.
But we'll, I don't, we don't know until we have done it.
Yeah.
Sometimes you have to cross the first bridge before you get to the second one, I guess.
Yeah. And sometimes when paperwork is done, paperwork is lost for some reasons.
Yep. I, I, I'm, I feel better about the possibility that there weren't buried tanks, personally. But the asbestos, obviously, I mean, if they had an asbestos remediation for dealing with it, that's a positive thing. Whether it would be, you know, whether there were any accidents that occurred, but I'm not sure what, whatever septic system-related problems occurred, that's kind of a done deal unless they were pouring, you know, something truly toxic down their septic system.
Yeah, but they, they have a new septic they put in.
The new one, but it's whether there was contamination on the property from the old system. system, is what I was talking about. But I mean, that could be true of any property, frankly. So, but I think we should at least find out what they can find out.
Yeah, and I think it's important for the town to do its due diligence, especially if you're talking about a third party, a five oh one C three coming in and somehow the town lets that third party, it could be Percher, whatever. Um, you know, they, they would want due diligence done too, and the town wouldn't want to be liable for anything that.
I don't think anyone wants to pass on a, a bad situation.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. I know I don't.
Yeah, right.
Are we good on that then? That's completes that update?
Yeah, I'll get back to Donna with our one change to the deed and then I'll go back to Lombardo's. Um, and we'll continue to do the environmental review, mostly Roger, waiting to see what that comes in.
Um, adminis, yeah?
Yeah, I have one more comment. Is there, um, this issue of courts? Did they get, did they give any justification of why they wouldn't want any paddle ball? Or, you know, could we go back to them and say we'd like, you know, an option to have three paddle ball, you know, pickleball courts?
He did, he, he said no courts or fields and he did say that there are courts and fields at town hall and so he doesn't feel needed, so.
There's a beach and, and the beach and what is it, that's the, and there's only one pickleball court at town hall and that's being shared with basketballs. And a lot of people on that survey, pickleball was a thing that people did want. And I just feel that if he's giving this property to us, he shouldn't have so much to say. He's giving it away for a tax deduction. Let's be honest about what's going on here. And if he gets his tax deduction, he gives it to the town, the town should be able to control this property within means. And I understand, well, he doesn't want housing or certain things like that. But once he gives it to the town, I think the town should have control on that property.
I, I see your point. Um, okay. Anything else guys? Okay.
No.
Um, administrative assistant hiring update?
So I did hear back from the highway office manager in New Marlboro. She is interested. She had a couple of questions. I heard back on Friday, she had a couple of questions about how many hours and rate and if the position was permanent and where it would be located. Um, I told her what the rate we had offered for the offices or administrative assistant. And I said that in talking with Roger, paying the bills could take about four hours per week. Um, so that would kind of be the minimum, I said. Um, but there's chapter ninety paperwork, there's grant paperwork, there's highway, whatever, OSHA compliance. Um, so I said, we could probably grow to a certain degree. And I think Roger, we, I think we said, or I said eight, doing highway stuff, six to eight. Um, but then I also threw out there, and I don't think that she wants it necessarily, but I said, if you want to do the whole position, it's fourteen hours. But that would be entail a lot more than just highway. It would be for various departments and committees. Um, and I'm waiting to hear back about a time to chat. I know this week's kind of difficult with the holiday on Thursday, so I don't know if we'll get a chance to talk this week. I was thinking if that talk goes well and she does really want to do the highway stuff, it'd be good for her to chat with Roger and Jim or Roger and Pete and kind of do it, an interview to make sure that the highway department and the town administration are on board. And then if that satisfied everyone, we, we'd move from there, but.
I also, I'm going back, circling back around to the way the meeting opened, I, Roger mentioned that her pay rate in New Marlboro right now is, is twenty six an hour, is that correct?
I actually don't know for sure.
Okay.
But if that, if it becomes a pay negotiation, we'll have to be involved. As of now, it's, it hasn't reached that point.
Okay.
I just told her what we had advertised for.
Gotcha. Okay.
I, I have had some conversations, uh, Natty, Nancy Cle- Cleveland, when she, uh, when I first started, she was doing a little work, uh, in the office and she stopped in last week or so and said she's, her schedule has changed somewhat. She's a little, uh, she's, uh, it's a little more set with her other position, so she has a couple of days where she's available. So as soon as I, I still have to get a desktop in here, the office. So I think I'll ask her to come in and if she can help here and there in the office as well, do it, do it some things. So I actually have something that she can help me with right now.
And for the, and that would be with a senior?
Yeah, that would be with the senior right of, through that, so, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, cool. Well, I'm glad there's at least two options, possibly.
Yeah.
Um.
I think once we know what the New Marlboro Highway Office Manager is interested in doing in Monterey, um, then we'll have to regroup and see how we want to tackle the rest of the position, both for the rest of this fiscal year, but also how we want to deal with it in the budget.
Yeah.
Is she, is the person full time?
Twenty hours in New Marlboro. So that, that's the reason why I initially reached out. We're not trying to steal anybody, but to see maybe it would complement well. And someone who's doing two highway departments certainly has some level of knowledge and expertise and relationship with chapter ninety.
Um, yeah, well, just that invoice issue. So, so that makes sense.
Um, I think the next thing on the agenda is the OSRP, uh, Open Space and Recreation Plan Priority List. And I, I wondered if you guys had a chance to look?
I, I looked at your, you know, where you had high the different priorities.
Yep.
And some of them felt like on the park commission, like Garfield. And I think we should go back to those groups, particularly as we do the budget, is, okay, is there something you can take on, you know, when you're playing your year out?
I, I think what Margie was envisioning was the question of what the select board thought was, like, was the priority thing they, if they were going to take on one or two things on the list, the ones where select board has mentioned, which ones do you guys feel are the ones that the select board should? Sorry, you want to look at mine?
Yeah, I, I mean, some of them are, you know, are more cumbersome.
Some are much bigger issues than others, yeah, no question.
Like on the trail, you know, volunteers, you know, how do they do that?
So Susan, there was a lot of things that I noticed that the select board already does, or people within the town government really do well, like the Lake Garfield Working Group does a lot of the things related to the health of Lake Garfield. Um, I think one thing that really stood out to me was the trails. Monterey has so many trails that people don't know about. And even in the last few years, more trails have been developed at Bidwell, uh, at the Bidwell House Museum, Rob Hoogs spearheaded, I believe. And, uh, I don't know if it's that map that shows all the trails throughout Monterey, I mean, between the state forests and nonprofits and town trails.
Have you ever seen the book New Marlboro has on trails?
I don't think so.
They show it at the Southfield Stores, the complete book. It's, you know, here it is, here's it on the map of the town, rate the, how hard it is.
And actually, one of the things that came up during the OSRP meetings was the idea of creating something like that, cause I think Margie had brought it to us for, for Monterey, like a, a sort of a comprehensive guide to the trails available in Monterey with little pieces of information. And Rob is really interested in participating in that, and I think there's a bunch of other people that are pretty gung ho about it. Um, I don't know what involvement the select board would necessarily need to have. I mean, I'm sure that if we were willing to say, hey, we'll put some select word money into this, um, people would do a happy, a happy dance. But, um, I'm certainly personally interested in seeing that funky variation. Uh, I don't, I don't know if it's necessarily a, I would wear my select word hat doing that or just my me hat, cause I like hiking and I'd be happy to participate in that, whether I'm as part of the support or not, is all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, another, another couple that I noticed, one was, we argue so much about Lake Garfield Health and Lake Garfield Working Group does a lot of it. Um, but I think a couple of things that were listed on here that don't get done as much is educating people about the phosphorus loading and looking at septic systems that are contributing.
Yeah.
And that I feel like is potentially an area that either we could take on or potentially the Lake Garfield Working Group. Um, maybe with the help of our lake scientists. Um, but that's something that, an area that we already work a lot in, but just a different approach than we often take.
Yeah.
And the other one, which is kind of, uh, a long shot, but is, is the ice rink. And I, I really do feel like with the winters that we've been having lately, the ice rink, you know, I got the email that they're setting up the ice rink, I think in a Saturday or two from now. And it's like some years it gets set up and there isn't, there aren't two days of skating to run together.
The last couple of years.
Um, I, I will, that in conversations with the fire chief, um, the, they're pretty concerned about the longevity of that pavilion.
Yeah.
Um, the, the integrity of the roof and a few other issues. Um, I don't know how that feeds into this question personally.
It's hard because how do you, we kind of got a backyard rink where you just threw some water down, a pavilion that was there anyway. And then, you know, they did do the addition, add the heating room. Um, so they actually did do specifically skating oriented improvements on the building. But now if you're gonna, if you're gonna do a new floor that's refrigerated, you might as well do a new pavilion. And then if you're doing that, you might as well do, and it's like, where does it stop? Because you have to hire someone full time or something to maintain it. And then you have to charge admission because although we'd love to offer just thanks to the community, that would be a hard one because it couldn't be a free for all twenty four seven. So. So it's, it's a tough one to nail down of like, can we do something that actually makes it more scatable with the weather we've been having without going full hole?
Mike Tremant had a share of that portable, that little ring. I, I don't remember the cost.
About a hundred K.
A hundred K, a hundred K, between twenty.
I don't know, I mean, what's five hundred K for a pavilion? Um, I, I'm sorry, boy. I mean, I, I'm having some pretty serious.
He wants a higher numbers. That's one reason.
Yeah, I know. Um, uh, just going down the list of stuff that had, was flagged with select word on there, the alternate pedestrian path from the town to the beach. While I totally recognize that that was something that was mentioned in the master plan as well, um, I, I think preliminary indications are, uh, that it's not tremendously feasible. Um, I, because there's, there's really only two options. One would involve going over a bunch of property owners' land who have indicated that they're not amenable. And the other would be a very expensive complete streets option, trying to figure out a way to make a pedestrian path along the road, which is going to be extremely costly. So I, I have a lot of, um. Yeah, I have a lot of reservations about that one, as much as I understand why people want it. I think from a practical standpoint, I'm hesitant to actively participate in that. Um, there's the CPA, the Community Preservation Act question of putting that, and I know that the planning board is definitely discussing that. Um, I don't know if they need our involvement. I think that, that when they want to go, I don't know if we need to be involved in that or if the planning board has it, basically. Um, I, I know you have mixed feelings about it. I would support putting it out there, um, and proceeding with it. But I, as I said, I think the planning board may be doing that already or planning to bring it to us and then we would have to approve it. So I guess we would have a conversation at that point. Um, one that did strike me is a potential option for us is the mention of safety improvements at the beach. I don't, I don't really know what that would involve or what's necessary. Um, but, and I don't know if that would really be the Parks Commission or us. Um.
Yeah, I know the Parks Commission has worked. Is Jerry still there?
No, he left.
They had worked on some signage, some additional buoys, cause it's a very awkward and kind of unsafe thing to have boats launching right next to a swimming area. Um, to some degree, the select board would probably be involved because the boat launch deal with the state. But also I know that it's been, it's been looked into again and again and again. And we made that deal with the state and we have to have that ramp. And it's, it's not ideal, but it's been looked at so, so much and thoroughly that it doesn't really seem like there's any other.
The other option, the other thing that was mentioned with the lake was, um, the speed limits on the lake. And I know that conversation came up a bunch of times during the OSRP. Um, and it does seem as though it might be possible to go, to go to the state again, to set a speed, the possibility exists for setting a speed limit on the lake. Whether we could get it approved by the state, because there's a whole process, I don't know. And whether or not, how enforceable it would be, I also don't know. But I do feel like that might be a place where the select board could participate, possibly with the Lake Garfield Working Group to try to move forward on trying to get a speed limit for the lake. I don't know if you guys think that's a priority, but I do think the select board could take a role.
I see the problem, and I wonder if the more straightforward solution is to enforce the boat traffic laws that are already in place and just focus on enforcement of kind of reckless or unsafe water activity. And then if we decided that's not sufficient, we add a lower, you know, a speed limit. But without enforcement, and I know someone talked about the police department maybe getting a vote on the future. That would be a way to do it.
I've heard them talk about, and I think Brian has talked about it.
He has.
Yeah, he has talked about it.
He also on occasion will call up, um, the, the state, uh, the, yeah, the guys that come out on the, on the lake every so often, if he has complaints, he gets complaints. He has, he did tell me that on occasion that he'll call them up and they'll come and put a vote in, travel around the, the lake a bit, but it doesn't happen very often.
Good. Mr. Ben. I'm just thinking, does the Great Pond designation, uh, come with any regulations that would deal with speeding on a lake? I don't know. I don't know.
I don't.
It might be something to look into. And the other way to look at it maybe, and you may know this better than I, Justin, but if you have a no wake zone, you're not saying the speed, you're just saying you can't make a weight. And that in itself could slow down.
Yeah, I think the channel is no wake zone. Um, I, at this point, it really is about enforcement, because there are, there are rules and regulations of water activity, but without an enforcement mechanism.
Yeah.
There's, I, we can't really do much about it. Yeah?
Well, education also comes into play too.
But, and how to educate people is always a question, like, I mean, I.
Well, one, here's a point. You're here, Dennis, and you go to Lake Garfield Working Group. Um, and we've talked about it before, but never done it, at least not since I've been on the board. If Lake Garfield Working Group came out with a one pager about water. If Lake Garfield Working Group came out with a one pager about water activity, rules and regulations. We could throw it in with the annual town meeting warrant. And just mail it out to everybody or, or another mailer that we do, probably that one. Um, because between Lake Buell, Lake Garfield and Stevens Lake, there's a lot of people that would benefit from that educational material. And I know we've talked about it. I just don't think it's ever been done.
Yeah, we could, we could talk about it in our December meeting, which is gonna fo- focus mainly on the budget. And some of the things I've discussed this evening will be going into that budget request. But yes, uh, I think it's a good idea. Sure. Just a one pager, right?
Yeah, it's good.
Long enough to go out.
Keep it simple.
Well, that only goes.
Timing too in the spring.
Yeah. In spring because it would go out with a mailing that's existing, that's to be late. Also, I guarantee you more than a page, people won't read it.
That's right.
And then it doesn't help. Oh, this is too long. And, and the thing is, it's not even like they read the first three paragraphs. If it's too long, they just don't even read it. Um, okay, two other things that um, I came across in there that I wasn't sure what to think of is. The water supply planning is mentioned in there and from what I under, I, I don't really understand the history of the Monterey Water Company. Completely. I mean, I know it a little bit, but um. I understand that there are concerns about the longevity of the quality water supply. And I'm wondering what happens should something fail? And whether or not the town needs to be thinking about planning for that possible eventuality? And what will happen in that event? And maybe it isn't the town government's responsibility. Maybe it's on the people that are currently part of the water company. But I'm just throwing it out there as to whether this is something we need to think about and plan for or not. And I, I don't know the answer. It's really just a question.
I don't know enough about it.
I think there are some contingency plans, at least short-term, about, I think, trucking water. Um, but it is, it is a private water company. I don't think it hurts to ask. And also the town's a significant client of the water company between the town hall and the library. And I think the fire station, yeah, the fire station. Um, and the rink every year. So we're, we're a significant uh.
Consumer.
Yeah.
Um, so what do you think would be involved in that? And is it something we should?
Well, just to start, I would just reach out and ask, cause I know that there was some requests by the state for contingency planning. Um, and just to see what there is. I'm vaguely familiar with the idea of water trucks bringing potable water up to the. Uh, where the, it's based on Sanus Field Road. But I don't think that's a long-term solution. I think that's uh, we have a dry summer. How do we get people water for a few months until the wall comes back?
Right. So I, I mean, I, I guess it's worth at least having a conversation with them to see not only what their contingency plan is, but what type of long-range contingency plan there would be. Um. I guess I could take that off. Uh, and the last one, oop, I don't go to sleep. Thank you. Um, the last one was mentioned of a scenic road bylaw. That I guess to protect some of the views and roads in Monterey. I don't know if it's something, again, these are all things I noticed that were flagged as the select board being one of the things. And I, I wasn't giving them any priority. I just was raising the question as to whether anybody else saw it, flagged it or thinks something we should do.
I saw, but it didn't like shut off a priority.
I mean, yeah, I don't, like, it, it seems like low hanging fruit, but I'm not sure that it's fruit we need to go after when we have interference, right? Yeah. Um. I think I, I will reach out to the, uh, well, I'll talk to Marty anyway, uh, to find out what the status of the planning board is with regard to the CBA. Um, if nothing else, as you know, I'm interested in the housing portion of that. And I feel like the CBA could be a significant source of money towards that. Um, so I have an interest in it happening, but we don't need to duplicate effort if they're already moving forward with it. Mm-hmm. Um. So what should I tell Marty about what the select board believes should be our priority issues?
Yeah.
I know, it's really hard.
I didn't bring my list. I made all my notes.
I'm, I'm gonna also raise one more ugly possibility here. Cause another thing on this list is the Monterey Community Center Pavilion is also mentioned in there. And I, I will confess to, I'm gonna call it sticker shop because I don't have another word for it. Um.
Well, we can talk about that when we get into the ARPA numbers.
Yeah, but it was on here as a, a thing. So it, I, I wrote it in the list. Like, you know, the original plan was like eighty-five thousand dollars and now we're talking about close to half a million dollars. And I'm, I'm, I'm having a lot of reservations. I realize the town isn't coming up with all that money, but I'm, I'm still. Like, if you're asking me what projects I think Monterey should undertake for half a million dollars, I, I'm not sure that this would be my half a million dollar project. Um, and I support the idea of a pavilion. I'm just, it's a lot of sticker shop for me.
Yeah.
And I think it would be for a lot of people, even ones that supported the existence of a pavilion.
I can provide clarification. Would you?
I know.
Yeah, cause I.
I know, I've seen it, but I'm, I'm still having a lot of sticker shock with it.
Yeah.
Because even if the town isn't carrying the whole cost, the cost of the project seems. Like a lot.
I read that proposal.
Well, that's not a proposal.
No, it's not a proposal, but.
Oh, Susan, I think take our discussion, just to wrap up the discussion about the open space and recreation plan. Why don't you just take what we discussed about and, and uh. If she needs a couple, pick a couple. I don't feel too strongly.
Okay.
Between, there's a lot of good moving pieces, but as to which couple are our priority. It's hard to say because some we really want to see happen, but we're not the main people behind them. And others, we know are kind of dead ends, but would be good to happen. And others, you know, are more realistic, low hanging fruit. So it's a mixed bag.
I know. And I think what Marty is looking for is what is the select word willing to take on? As our issues, we wanna carry the ball on. And I.
Yeah, but I, I mean, all that, you know, becomes relative because everything has a cost.
Yeah.
Okay, there's, and so, you know, we know we have all these other challenges with the fire company and labor and all that stuff. So, you know, you have to wait till you get the whole recipe in to decide how you're gonna make a budget.
And I, well, I, I'm also thinking about the allocation of our effort. Um, so it's, it's in part about town money, but it's also in part about, okay, there's three of us. And if we're taking on projects that involve effort and thinking and time, we have to be careful about what projects.
Well, we also gonna need, if you look at some of them, you're gonna need volunteers.
Yeah.
You know, that, you know, how much.
But you have to organize it. You have to, you have to decide on it. You have to organize it. You have to get a group of people together. You have to fund it. There's a lot of parts to that. And so the question is, are we, is there a project there? The select word gives priority to and wants to take on. And I think the answer is, we're not really sure.
Well, I, I think the subcategories in a lot of, you had like Lake Garfield, the park. You know, we need input from the park commission. What, what can they help us take on?
Well, in a, a lot of cases, I think the, for some of this stuff, they would be the obvious people to.
Yeah, for them to have volunteers to get it done.
Like maintaining trails and stuff.
Well, yeah, I think that's, I think the drill.
So not really any closure for me, right?
We'll figure it out.
I just, I gotta tell Marty something.
I think you can tell her that you'll reach out to the water company about contingency planning. And we're asking Lake Garfield Work Group to uh, work on a mailer for next spring if they're up for it. Those are ones that we can do.
Okay.
I mean, they're not the, the long-range planning, big projects, but well, it's a start.
Right. That's right. All right. What was next on the agenda?
The ARPA.
ARPA money.
Can I talk briefly about ARPA?
Please do.
Before we get into the, you know, the specific discussion of the pavilion, just to do a little cleanup of bookkeeping. So to speak, um, I'm just asking that the board uh, finalize the site analysis for the cost that it actually came in at. And then also set the amount available for community center improvements to the eighty-five thousand and fifty-five. Figure just because that is what's left over when you take everything else out. In the last few months, we've gotten a little more clarity on the historical commission and the renewable energy working group projects. And other than that, all of the projects have been finalized. Um, so.
Just to clarify, the Fox Hill proposed change, is that, that we spent twenty-six, forty-six, oh six more or twenty-six, oh, forty-six, oh six less than the fourth?
Just total. That was the bill.
Was what we actually.
So I'm just saying, we set that as the, tha- that is the budget for that project. It's already completed. And then that gives us a final community center number because they've been kind of in limbo, not knowing the exact number.
Fair.
Do you think I could follow up on that if it's okay? Um, to follow up on your comment, uh, Justin, and I would need that number for the grant application if.
Yeah, well, I'll give you the.
You can have this one. There's a.
Eighty-five, oh, fifty-five, three cent.
I can send it to you.
It's right there.
Three cents.
Yeah. Get a lot with that.
I explained it all in one place.
Yeah, right. Um.
So, excuse me. Um, so we're looking at the seventy-five, four thirty-nine or the eighty-five?
The eighty-five, the one on the right hand column. Eighty-five, right column, the eighty-five, oh fifty-five, oh three.
Okay, so I can use the eighty-five?
Oh, fifty-five, oh three.
Okay, good. That's what they're gonna be agreeing on, right? That's what you guys.
I believe so.
Okay, that's, that's great.
So.
Cause in the, uh, in, in the accounting system for Fox Hill, there was one thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-four cents remaining.
Okay.
In that line item. So.
I know. Um.
So Dennis, I was gonna back up a little bit. So what I did when I talked to you today. Uh, you gave me a number of four, four, one, two, seventy-five.
Yes.
Okay. And then because we would have to um, pay fifty percent of the, the uh, that. Cause that's what the total cost. There may be a few thousand dollars difference in it, but it's a working sheet. So then we had the fund from the uh, lights, which is twenty-nine thousand. So that would take it down to one ninety-one, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Yes.
And then I used the ARPA fund and minus that out. So it would be that town's portion of fifty percent at that point would be a hundred and six thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight. Okay? But being the project is over four hundred thousand.
Yes.
We are responsible for anything over four hundred thousand.
Would the state give back to you today? You would. No, they didn't respond back. But what I did is I looked historically through the previous grants that were offered. And I didn't see anything above two hundred thousand.
Oh, really?
Okay. So that forty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five.
Dollars we would do.
Right.
So rounding up, what we know now, we'd be responsible for approximately a hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Say round it to one fifty, you know.
So that's, that's where we're at right, right now.
It's just hard to see how the eighty-five thousand dollar pavilion has ended up at a four hundred, forty thousand dollars.
Part of it.
I get there, a hundred thousand dollar bathroom's hard enough to swallow.
It's not just the pavilion, it's the bathroom.
Yeah.
That's what she said.
And that's required.
I know. I get it. But.
And these are post.
And then the site work.
Yeah, and the site work. And these are all post-COVID numbers that seem to be pervasive in our society.
I, I get it.
You know?
But I, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, you know. You know, it's a license to steal. You know, they put it in at a fifteen mark, percent margin. Does that, is that a normal for a G C?
Fifteen percent is on the low side, actually.
It is.
I think so.
And what's the difference between that and the general conditions, general requirements for fifty K? So, so it's really, it's the fifteen percent plus the fifty K. So it's nearly ninety K. So a quarter of the price of it, close to.
Right. And well, and there's also this design and pricing contingency of forty thousand dollars, which.
That, that's what I mean. The, the design and pricing contingency plus general conditions, general requirements.
Yeah.
So you're, you're really talking ninety K for, for what exactly?
Yeah.
It's not for a nail or a hammer.
No. Um.
Yeah.
And plus there's overhead and profit.
Right.
So it's really a hundred and fifty thousand. So the reason it's four hundred and fifty thousand is that a hundred and fifty thousand isn't actually the building?
Yeah. That's.
Or the labor?
And this is pre-bid.
I'm definitely suffering some pretty significant sticker shock and I, I got a feeling that I won't be alone in that. I mean, I think.
Yeah.
And understand, this is a project I theoretically support, but.
Well, maybe we need to get a better understanding from that estimation company of what they think, you know, what these items are. You know, and are these realistic numbers? But part, I had a conversation uh, with the estimator because they, they originally had. A toilet in there at twenty-five hundred dollars. And I said, well, I looked, you know, online at build.com and Home Depot and the most expensive toilet I could find was two hundred and fifty dollars. This is ten times that. So I said, put it in at five hundred. And um, she said, you know, it's just the, the, you can't, it's such a small job. It's hard to get anybody to bid on it without.
Oh, so we're actually just inflating the price so that someone will bid?
So that someone will bid it, or, or, or that someone will only bid this smaller job if they can, you know, inflate the numbers. And that's, you know, because of the whole.
I'm sorry for that, but I'm not sure I'm willing to pay that to make it happen.
So if we can find a commercial contractor that's like willing to be reasonable.
So we're adding on to the, I mean, because it has the pavilion, you know, at a hundred and thirty something thou. You know, what's that cost per square foot for the?
Pavilion?
Yeah, but I mean, like you're pointing out, Susan, it's just, you know, you look at it.
The pavilion you were getting from a, actually a third party anyway, right?
The pavilion itself, right? Pre-wood structure, not the foundation and that work.
But that was coming from like another, wasn't necessarily built by them.
Right, right. It was coming from, uh, it would be, it would be process-built and delivered, and they've delivered, and then they come and assemble it.
Yeah. And I'm having a problem even with the two seventy after what you just told me about the toilet, what else?
Yeah.
Is, is it the same markup on every single item that's on there?
Oh, yeah. So keep this in mind, um, that, um, we started out at five twelve and change, and we came down to four hundred and forty-one and change. That's a reduction of about seventy-one thousand dollars.
Instead of nine times this.
That was after I, I went through it and in fact, the estimator.
So, you know, I guess what I have to ask now is the timeline for submission of this document, if we want to go forward with a construction grant application is December nineteenth. I would have to have some clarity as to whether or not the board wishes to move forward with submitting the application.
And what are the ramifications if you get the grant and then decide not to use it? Can you do that?
You can do that. Communities have denied the use of the grant. And the state wouldn't mind, uh, I'm not speaking for the state, but they would just simply allocate that for other projects in some other town.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I have a question, Dennis. I think we have a lot of things lined up that are all coming together in a really good way between the design and the ARPA funds and the fifty percent match from the state. Um, it's just coming in a little bit high, and every dollar over four hundred thousand, especially if they won't cover dollars over four hundred thousand, uh, is a relatively large burden on the town. Would there be any way to get it under four hundred thousand?
Um, well, here's one way to do it, um.
I mean, Justin, Justin, keep in mind that what we have is not a bid, it's an estimate from a professional estimator. And I think it's in their best interest to keep the numbers high, because they don't want you coming back and saying, oh, you said it was only gonna cost this and it costs that. So unfortunately, until this thing really goes out to bid to several contractors, where we don't have real numbers, this was more about, you know, kind of getting the ballpark and figuring out what configuration of bathroom we were gonna do, and, um.
So at the end of the day, we apply for the grant, and then we put it out to bid, and if the bids come back at seven hundred thousand dollars, we say, oh no.
Never mind.
You can reject a bid, you can reject a bid.
Yeah, and I, believe me, if it did, I would.
Right.
Sorry, but.
Or the town could consider.
Would there be, I don't think this would be helpful to making the project attractive, but it might be helpful to at least moving in the right direction on that property. Would there be any way to separate out the bathroom and the pavilion? Because I know the bathroom is kind of necessary to expand the use of the property and to get a pavilion. But for instance, if the whole project was unaffordable, but we could at least do the bathroom and move a step in the right direction, would there be any way to do that? If, if push came to shove, and the whole project came in, you know, even far above what the estimator said, but we still could afford that, some part of it, would there be any way to separate that out or no?
We would, uh, in terms of just the bathroom, we'd have to convince the state that from a cultural standpoint, that is an important item of support.
Right, it's cultural grant, right. Because the pavilion, the pavilion is a cultural item.
Because it's an older population.
I could be wrong.
Well, Justin, they do, on the page two, they do, you know, they have the bathroom at approximately ninety-three thousand. And then pavilion at one thirty-one, and then you got all these other overhead costs in the site preparation, bond insurance, and, you know, all that.
I mean, I see your point, like, adding the bathroom would give us the possibility of adding other facilities in the future that raise the site, but I, I just. As many people as want the pavilion, I'm just wondering how much my phone's gonna ring when people hear the price that I associated with it, because it's a lot, and I know it's not your fault, I'm just expressing what I think will not be unique to me. And I don't, I don't really know what to do about it.
Yeah, would the town be receptive to what was done at the, uh, town library, that is to say, private fundraising?
How could we not be?
That's.
No, don't do it, buddy!
I bet we shared that into court.
Or we can have.
Or you should know the answer to the question before we answer it.
Or you can have.
So I asked. Would that be something that, you know, I don't know how that would appear, but.
I need like a Friends of the Community Center Pavilion organization to gather money, you know?
It worked fairly well with the town.
Get your name on the bathroom plaque. Come over, his name on for someone, and say his name.
We're so advertising in the bathroom.
The roof's named after somebody, every tile, well, we can have somebody's name on each tile.
Bleeds are etched, yes.
For only ten grand, you too can have a tile in the bathroom.
You know, my feeling is we should proceed with the, the grant money. And being, we can always turn it down, we can turn it down, you know, maybe it'll turn.
It's a lot of effort for you if it comes to that, but at least.
Yeah, but you gotta try, we'll, we'll try to gather more information, talk to contractors and do that, but I don't think we should, we've gone this, we've done this much work, and we spent a lot of money getting this done.
Yeah.
So I think we should go ahead and do it, knowing that, hey, the select board may not put it on the warrant, or the warrant may put on the warrant, people may say, no, the pavilion's not that important, for the cause.
It's just too, yeah, it's just too expensive.
It's got too expensive. What year would that construction start? Would it be in?
Realistically, what do you think, twenty-six, or late twenty-five?
Late twenty-five.
Late twenty-five.
A good start.
It could start, yeah.
I mean, they don't feel like they're supposed to.
And we also have to, the ARPA money has to be used, right, by, is it twenty-six? I know.
I think so.
Two years.
I know there's a timeline on that.
Is it December twenty-twenty-six, or July twenty-twenty-six?
I think it's December of twenty-six. Um, but I'm, I'm waiting some more guidance from the government about those ARPA funds, because I just don't know what the reporting requirements, and we have to have allocated them by this December, and I don't know what the process for that's gonna look like. We might make them something vague, like improvements at the community center. So that regardless of how this falls out, we can do, you know, something.
Could I ask another question in relation to that? The, for this current grant that you're seeing some of the, um, deliverables for, um, thirty-three thousand was allocated out of ARPA and told to the state. Does the eighty-five thousand that we talked about, has that thirty-three thousand been accounted for outside of the eighty-five thousand?
No, the eighty, the thirty-three thousand is coming out of the eighty-five thousand.
Oh.
That's the eighty-five thousand is the total amount for the community center from ARPA.
Right.
I see.
So there's, we gotta put another thirty-three on the total, right?
But it was a thirty-three.
That's what that base looks like to me.
You can, uh, the town will have to, you know, pay that thirty, thirty-three for this grant.
Right, but it comes out, that would mean that thirty-three of the eighty-five has been spent.
So the numbers will go up.
Yeah, it's gonna go up thirty-three thousand.
It's now a hundred and seventy.
If we put a hundred and seventy K on the warrant, I'm going on vacation for town meeting. I know, I just. But I, I still think that we probably should go forward with.
Probably with the grant, too.
I know.
And now we need to figure out how to take a hundred thousand dollars out of the project.
I'm really sorry, guys, but it's like, it's the reality check of like, I outrun it by a few more people that are invested in the project, but I have a feeling I'm, I'm not the only one that's suffering from severe sticker shock.
It's just unbelievable.
Yeah, it's insane. I mean, as Ari said, I still don't understand why I can't just go and get a ten thousand dollar pavilion. I'm like, I don't know, show up with, but no, come on, we'll figure out what to do.
Well, we used to say, you do it, you, you do it and then ask for forgiveness.
I know.
Well, I didn't know that was the capital.
Someone donated.
I heard something about a bridge, yeah.
Yeah!
Did we have a timeline on, wasn't it something like five years we had to have that bathroom con- uh, constructed at the MCC?
I think so.
You know what, they went to the state, didn't you go to the state plumbing appeals board?
I think they did, and the state said.
The whole thing drives me nuts, because there are so many pavilions in this area that don't have a bathroom.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. And pavilions in general, you just, if there's a big event, you get a porta potty.
Right.
So from day one, yeah, I, it drives me crazy. I don't, but you know what, Dennis, I honestly don't know where it was left at, with, because I remember hearing the five-year plan thrown around. I just, I don't remember what the eventual, if, if you can't sell the bathroom as a cultural, as a cultural, yeah, necessity, maybe we could revisit doing the pavilion and appealing the bathroom again, or something.
I mean, if we don't have the pavilion, we don't, there's no additional occupancy, so without pavilion, technically, we don't need the bathroom.
Right. So if we just went for the pavilion and the grant application with some sort of language that says, you know, we intend to meet the five-year plan for the bathroom?
Well, that's a trick, because that's an unfunded liability. But, but I'm open to it, because I think that the bathroom requirement's stupid, so I'm definitely open to pivoting.
I don't know, how much is that porta potty, a yearly rental of a porta potty? How many years of rental of a porta potty did you get for a hundred K? Forty?
You could have a bank of them.
Uh, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's expensive to have a porta potty.
Nope.
It's not bad.
We paid, we paid, monthly we paid for one here, a couple of them in town.
Like, do one out back there, one down.
Yeah.
I think they're paying something like fifteen hundred a month for the tent.
Yeah.
Fifteen, sixteen hundred, maybe more, I don't know for sure.
That's a lot of years of training.
And a porta potty.
Yeah.
Makes the pavilion look cheap.
I know that, that.
One, well, no, I guess we're too far.
Years of the tent and the porta potty. Sorry, what was up?
I'm just thinking, we have all these funds lined up to improve the community center property, and it just seems to be kind of above the budget, and I, I don't know, I guess it's too late to kind of switch gears. But I, I hope, Dennis, that we can find some way to, you know, go to work through with all the hard work that's already been put in, to have something to show for it at the end of the day that improves the, you know, the community center.
What did he say?
Yeah.
All right, like, we all really wanna see something good happen. Just don't know if we have half of the dollars to put towards it. Do we have anything else on ARPA, now that we've beat this worst enough?
So, so that's a green line to submit?
Yeah, I would submit, but you, yeah, you have to understand, in the end, it may get rejected. I, I think we've gone this far, and I, I think.
Yeah, it's just because of the timeline.
I think it's easier to tell people, look, this is what happened, versus how we cut it off.
Yeah.
And we should do our due diligence. Story of contracting business at that rate.
Let's slap a pavilion down there and stick a porta potty, get a hundred and twenty thousand.
I would store plenty of toilets in there, none of them are than a two thousand dollar toilet.
Oh my God. Oh, okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you. You can get them from Amazon, and spray some everything.
I thought there was a gold one for twenty-five hundred dollars. Was that the one with the lights?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys, thanks for hanging in there.
This is your job.
Next up is consider release of executive session minutes related to.
Table the next week, or table the next meeting.
Agreed. Town administrator updates?
Um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the town clerk. We did, uh, um, I, I did get in touch with, um, Chris, um, by text, and I let him know that um, after I got an okay from the, um, town council, that based upon some mass general law, that the town clerk can in writing appoint a assistant town clerk. And so I did reach out to Chris and, um, asked that at some point soon. He, um, he sent a, um, an email to, and we have spoken to Gary Shaw, and Gary Shaw has agreed to be assistant town clerk for the next six weeks or so, until, until Chris gets through his first full round of chemo therapy, and then we can figure out what happens after that. Um, so I asked, uh, that Chris send an email to Gary, myself, and the three of you, stating that, um, he is appointing Gary Shaw as the assistant town clerk. Um, I don't know, that, that's, you know, Gary's done all his oath stuff already for everything, so I don't know how that works, but we'll figure that out. Um, I do was talking to Mari today, Mari was in, she, um, has, uh, did get Kim Jeffries, um, uh, sworn an oath. She, she took care of that, and I know that she, um, also, we're trying to get in touch with Vicky Weisman, because I believe that technically Mari is only, uh, town clerk until tomorrow at one o'clock, which was two days, technically, I guess. And so we're trying to get her coordinated with Vicky Weisman as well. Vicky Weisman has been, uh, as, uh, for the conservation commission.
Ah, again, her sworn.
Get her sworn in.
Didn't one, Mark, because I can't remember, is that the planning board?
Oh, Mark Hyman. Um, I don't know if he's been sworn in.
I don't think he was last time I talked to Mark about.
In good news, if that doesn't happen, but Gary is willing to serve.
Yes, yeah.
It's not gonna be a long gap.
Okay, but, so, yeah, so that, that's why I'm trying to get that all, uh, coordinated with, um, with, through, with Gary and, uh, and Chris at this point in time, to get that figured out. The, uh, the, um, the butternut fire here, the Great Barrington, um, of fire that happened down there. We, um, over the course of two days last week, had upwards of thirteen firefighters down there.
I'm glad we have thirteen firefighters to have down there.
Yes, they all, they all came down. I, I know, Justin, you were down there for one of the days, right? Justin, you were down there on Wednesday, I think he was down there. It has, um, it was a good hit to the budget.
Yeah.
It was, uh, I think it was around, um, nine thousand dollars of, of work that was done. So I was trying to parse out, there were, there was actually. So I was trying to parse out, there were, there was actually a couple of actual calls that were done by a couple of people that were here for things around here, so I'm trying to kind of parse it all out. But it was around nine thousand dollars just for that specific day, or those two days. So I have a note in the budget, we'll look and see what happens as we get more towards the middle of the year.
Yeah, I know.
What these individuals did.
It's pretty tight.
I know, no, I mean, the two, I know that they waited, um, the first day, you know. So, I don't know, we can talk in about a couple of weeks, but there should be some acknowledgement of letter or something.
Maybe even something to the, in the moderators or something like that, acknowledging that, just like working together.
Do you think you can get, um, the names of the people?
Yeah, yeah, I can get the names.
Let's get the names of the people and, uh, you know, let it be known, thankful we have these people that volunteer.
Yeah, I can, yeah.
I don't know if it was the fire or what, but at least we got some rain.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I'm gonna throw out an idea with regard to that, because if we're not meeting for two weeks, I, I don't, can we, should we wait that long, or? Because if I could draft something, or if one of us.
Well, Roger, why don't you draft some, strip draft a letter and then email it out to us and this, and then, um, you know, I don't know, I don't have the clothes or the.
I can draft a letter or something.
Right.
You know.
We, yeah. I sort of feel like if we each were willing to look at it and privately tell Roger, and Roger can tweet the letter and then just go ahead and send it out, and we can. I, I just would like to get them something sooner rather than later, are you okay with that, Justin?
Yeah, if we get an open meeting law complaint about thanking firefighters, get out of here.
How many people was it?
What's that?
How many people?
Uh, thirteen, I think, thirteen on Wednesday, I don't know about Tuesday, so, but.
Yeah, but it, it was thirteen individuals?
Yeah, but thirteen individuals.
But some of them may have worked Tuesday.
Yes, yeah, there, there's a bunch of them that worked both days.
I mean.
I saw a picture somewhere, it was on the, uh, maybe Berkshire Eagle, there was two firemen walking, they had Monterey on the back of their.
Oh, really?
I saw that one.
I think it was, I, I, I don't remember which news that, but it was from, probably been one of the TV channels.
And last little thing on the budget, since it did come up, I am, um, um, working on new spreadsheets to send out. Have a little bit of a different, uh, process to send out, because, and also, um, I'm hoping that the, not the week after Thanksgiving next week, but the week after that. I have to, I'm gonna try and get people in here, uh, the staff, to start talking about it, like, just have an open session for an hour, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, have them come in. And be available to talk about how things are and the way that the spreadsheets are and that they're gonna work with. And I'm also working with ClearGov, that company with the budget, and I have, uh, another, I've had, I had a meeting yesterday with them to talk about the, the import of the data, that we should be launching it. I think within the next day or so, that I should be launching the, the data that I can have access to, and then next, next, uh, Wednesday, I have a meeting with them to sort of go over. Um, how the budget book would be looked and how, how you could look at it and have that available, so. Eventually, what will happen, my, my plan is to sort of use these spreadsheets to collect the data, and then collect that data, import that data into the, and then. Bring those budget, that budget data into ClearGov, and then have the select board, finance committee access to that data, and just sort of see how that looks and kind of go through those steps and figure it out from there.
What about DPW's budget, because Jim was actively involved in that.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's one of the things I'm working on, so.
But right now, it's tentative dates back the first.
January first, yeah, yeah.
Hopefully it'd be that, hopefully.
Yeah, 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 so that's kind of how the budget is going right now, so I'm trying, my, and really my way that I'm working it is that I'm essentially showing people. Back to twenty twenty-two, what the budget was for that fiscal year, what the expenditure was, and then giving them the high and the low across that of their expenditures. So that when they look at that, they can see that, oh geez, they had X dollars for last year's budget, or the past three or four years, we've had a high and a low. If that budget is higher than the high that they expended, there's no reason to actually increase it, really try to look at sort of, is keeping those expenses is low or within the, within what they've been spending in the past three or four years.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have a lot of interesting challenges, especially when it comes to part, part of that area.
Yeah.
So those are my things.
Roger.
Yep.
Are you gonna be expecting budget proposals by a specific date?
Um, yes, I haven't really come up with that date yet, I just, I have to sort of look at how I'm doing with my, uh, spreadsheets and updating those spreadsheets, but yeah, I'm hoping that once I get the, I have that meeting. To, to show people what, what it is, and then go back, I have to go back and look at what the dates are, because I can't remember what they were that the, uh, that the finance committee had set, because they had some dates that they set as well. So I'm hoping that beginning of January is where we'll be getting the numbers back from people and sitting down and talking, I mean, it might be a little tight, but I'm trying to set up something new, so.
Yeah.
Well, and then, we meet with the department head and a select board member and a finance committee member and you, and.
Yep.
Right, so just, whatever you come up with a schedule for that, let us know, and we can divide up who's taking which meetings.
Sure, yeah, I can definitely do that.
What, what about capital?
Well, capital, the way, our capital isn't really capital capital, is this defined by capital? So I, I have it down there as, um, um, requests for items outside of the operating budget.
Okay, that's fine.
That's kind of how I'm looking at it.
And server code it any way you want.
Yeah. So it's requests that will probably be for free cash or something like that, yeah, however, where, where the money goes from, but that's kind of how I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it and defining it, so. Like there's, like there's, like last year, there was some stuff that was on the parks commission, the, the parks, um, spreadsheet that I think just kind of got missed because of the transition and everything that was happening. So I've actually copied that back into their spreadsheet, and we'll have a conversation about that again, so.
The other thing, you might want to talk to Sean, when I, I met with Sean and Chris, they talked, I remember when we gave them the nod a year ago for the fire truck, oh, they said two years? When I talked to them six weeks ago, five weeks ago, they said it's another two years. So it'd be interesting to understand what that is, because that's gonna be a huge finance item, and we need to know, it could be two or three years before you get it. But we're gonna be spending money, we want to know how that's gonna impact, where we put that in when we look at the years out.
Right.
So I would ask them, you know, we need some kind of date.
It is actually, I guess, in a way, the longer, the further out it goes, because we, uh.
Hopefully, interest rates will come down.
And we draw down our capital, some, our, you know, our ordinary capital, so it draws down so fast.
Yeah, well, I got, I got an email out about meeting, I want you there and a Dr. Steve and, and I'll get a Dell, but, you know, part of that whole, you know, getting this contract signed for the fire. Is for them to find out what they need, now, now, what I have stressed, you know, you don't always get what you want, it's gotta be, you know, you know, three to five-year plan, it's not a one-year plan. So, um, you know, because what I've said to them, we're gonna be challenged for cap, you know, because labor's gonna be so important this year, going in that, you know, that's gotta be a priority.
So that's all I have.
Um, I, on the, related to the budget note, I just, what, isn't this about the time the performance evaluations were occurring the last couple of years?
Yeah, um, December, it'd be really good to do them in December, if we can get them all done by the end of the year, so. I'll get the town administrator form out, um, at least, at the very least, on the next agenda, we'll review the town administrator evaluation form. I told Roger too, because I talked to him about the performance evaluations, with him having been in since March, that's eight months, so we can do something. But he's also only known the department heads for less than a year, so. I'm just taking that in consideration as far as the town administrator review of department heads. But it would be good to get them all done.
I think you can, but you, you can start with the premise, you know, although our time together has been limited, this is what I see.
Yeah.
I think, I think, you know, I trust Roger, I think he needs to give them the observation, you know, you have to acknowledge the shortage of time. And, you know, Roger has spent more time, he has to spend more time getting caught up in solving mysteries than leading the department heads, but I think you can do it on the premise. You acknowledge that it's not a full year, but you still gotta do it.
And you have to, you have to allow it to go forward to build that working relationship.
Yeah, yeah.
And, but it might also be necessary to remind the department heads that they need to schedule their review of their personnel.
Right.
Yeah, but then the biggest department.
Let me dig up the forms.
Okay.
And. If there's nothing crazy other than some typos, I'll probably just send them to Roger, and he can get them out to each department. Unless you all feel like you want to stab at reviewing them.
Honestly, I think if it ain't broke, like, I don't remember there being a major problem with them, and so I, we already, we spent so much time developing them, I, I don't really want to redo something unless it comes to.
All right, then I'll get those, I'll get those, I'll dig those out.
We're paying the fire chief, there's a Chris, assistant fire chief, I'm not sure of the job title, but now that we pay him for a day, do they get appraisal, did they get appraisal last year?
I don't know, was there a performance evaluation on?
Yeah, but I don't, see, I think it was, he was volunteer, he was just, he was.
But now it's.
He's not like, okay, Mondays, you're working here for us.
Frank, just to fill you in, there was, the town administrator did do an evaluation of the fire chief, and then the fire chief reviewed all of the firefighters.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's.
Okay.
Then that means you do, yeah, then he would do Chris, but that means you, you just have to do the one, just, okay, thank you, Justin.
Um, okay. I had a couple of, of things I just wanted to connect on, is anybody planning to go to the MMA conference? Uh, January sometime, February, I don't, I don't remember the date, but we got, it's called Connect Three Five One. I had to look it up, there's three hundred fifty-one, ten, nine, three, seven.
I tried to go a couple of years ago and I canceled due to COVID, like, not a week before or something, and I haven't, no, I, I'm not planning on it.
It's not like a two-day, two-day event though?
Yeah, and I mean, like, they're pushing it, like, there'll be all these vendors there, and I'm like.
I don't need to help spending.
Like, I'm not sure that's helpful to me.
I, I don't, you know, I, I just think January is a busy month, between weather and budgets.
Budgets, definitely. Um, on a, the next one I have is the MRF contract, did it get?
Just have one more, uh, one more little.
Please sign that so we can send it in.
Oh, nice.
Pardon?
With the which contract?
The municipal recycling, isn't it?
Is it app that I can sign now?
Yep. So, and when is our contract with Collins Center up? Yeah, that's exactly the.
I think we had a contract, I thought it was a letter of engagement.
Okay.
Um, we just, what's that?
It was for a year, wasn't it?
I don't, I'd have to look back, but I thought it was more of a letter of engagement in the sense that we weren't promising that many hours, it was just consultant work.
Yeah, there was a rate per hours, and we put it in the number of hours per month.
Yeah, I, I just want to float the possibility of, um, I mean, honestly, RJ pointed out to me that he works for a gallery that has three full-time employees, and they actually. Use a HR firm that does hiring, firing, benefits, performance reviews, et cetera, for them, and maybe we need it, maybe we don't, but. Having an actual person responsible for complete HR onboarding might be a desirable thing, and I, I'm just throwing it out there as something for us to think about, I, you know, not that we are gonna make a decision about it, and. Claire, we should put it on a, a future meeting, but I think we should at least discuss that.
I don't think we should let the Collins Center, whatever engagement we, we have with them, prevent us exploring other options, because I don't think we're tied down to Collins Center in any way. We'd have to revisit that, but, um, they, we wanted to get them as our HR director, and they basically said, no, we won't do that.
Exactly.
On call, um. We, and we had looked at a couple of other firms, as I'm sure you remember, or at least one other, ClearGov, no, not, no, that's the budget software.
Right, right, no, what I remember, yeah.
But. But you know what, I was just reading, did anyone read the article about Smitty Pignatelli in the Berkshire Eagle today?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
We're not alone in, uh, so, I don't know, maybe one day it makes sense to get a part-time, it's hard to find somebody.
Honestly, after that story, I kind of feel like I'd rather have a consultant. You can choose if you think the consultant is not doing their job, you can choose to not renew their contract without having to fire a down employee or get into this kind of situation of having like, you know, coffee.
Yeah. It's definitely was an ongoing, and so, you know, Mary and I had a couple of discussions over the summer of like, we need to get this straight about what you're all doing for us and what the timelines are, and. It hasn't always been working, and, and, uh, we might need to revamp that. Roger, we met with her one time, and you all were gonna do bi-weekly meetings, right?
Yeah, yeah, that, that did not last very long at all, so I think we, I think we did one maybe, yeah, and then it kind of fell apart.
I don't know, because we could use it, and I think they have kind of what it takes, and they have the experience, and they're focused on municipalities, which is really good for our situation, obviously. But nailing down our expectations and getting things done on time has been not happening.
Yeah.
As you all know.
It was, it was really a struggle even for the, um, for the administrative assistance position, using them.
Yeah, that's what I didn't want to say in front of that group, but my, you said to it, there was frustration.
There was, there was, there was a lot of.
But you led the effort, which, when you're handing it off, they should be leading the effort.
Yeah, so it was, it was a little, um, they, they, uh, yeah, they, they just didn't do, I, 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 I think it was, there was just a lot of like waiting and hanging, and some of the, um. I, I don't necessarily think that they should have not allowed people who didn't have any, um, uh, municipal experience to be part of the conversation, and they kind of did that. The one person I spoke to had library experience, and that was, and they were like, well, I guess we'll do this one, she has library experience, so.
Well, that's weird criteria for the position of all positions.
Yeah, because they.
Library and a budget and a.
Yeah, they, they were looking for some, they were looking for people, if they didn't have municipal experience, they didn't, they didn't pass them through.
I mean, fundamentally, what, uh, you know, it's like there's two different paths, either you, you look at every single applicant, or you comb the applicants for some keywords or whatever, and if those aren't there, you choose not to. Whatever, wherever it is, they, they've had municipal experience, or they have this credential, or they have this GPA, it's a simple thing, unfortunately, it's simple, you know. I wish there was option three, instead of this very simple criteria that's easy to come for, or reading every single one thoroughly, like.
Yeah.
I don't know, um. Yeah. So, yeah, we, I think we at the very least need to have another conversation about it, and maybe think about how we might.
What are our options?
Yeah, what our options are, um. I did actually look at, uh, three of the policies, but given that it's eight thirty, I think we might want to do that with the next meeting.
Yeah, I think so.
Um, and what's next on here? That was the, that was the only unanticipated business thing I. That was the, that was the only unanticipated business I, I, I wanted to talk about, approval minutes of ten twenty-two, I don't have.
I couldn't find the ten twenty.
Yeah, I don't think you ever.
I have it.
I had.
No, I'd be happy. No, but you do. Yeah, I went out of order.
Okay. I had comments on either the eleven nineteen or the eleven twenty-five, which was yesterday. Twenty-four?
Yeah, no, nineteen and six, eleven-six and nineteen.
Eleven-six.
Yeah, I printed it, it's on that.
Yeah.
Oh, eleven-six and eleven-nineteen, sorry, no, I was just looking at the ones that he actually said out, and I.
So just to set the record straight, October twenty-second and November sixth are outstanding.
Right, so we have eleven-nineteen.
Yeah, well, eleven-nineteen was the short meeting, right?
No, there was a meeting or two, I usually take good notes, there was a meeting or two, I just forgot to take notes.
Well, you gave us the eleven-twenty-five, twenty-four.
Right, but we kept it on, on the agenda, so we can do it.
We can approve them, we can approve them, we're actively, I can get them out to the public sooner if they're approved. We're actively promoting transparency.
So I had no, I have no edits for eleven-nineteen. Um, I will move that we approve the proposed minutes, or the draft minutes of eleven-nineteen twenty-four.
Motion, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Justin, yes.
I do, I.
And, uh, I have no comments on the eleven, oh, what did?
Twenty-five.
Eleven-twenty-five. Twenty-four, uh, meeting minutes, uh, I motion that we approve the meeting minutes for eleven-twenty-five, twenty-four.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Justin, yes.
Whee! That was exciting.
Okay.
Okay, um, and there is no public presence, so there is no one to comment or question.
Where's Mickey when you need him?
I know, right? Are we good to adjourn? We're meeting in two weeks.
I think we will, if we want to meet next week, we can, but with the holiday, you know, I don't expect a lot to be happening at the end of this week.
Right.
Right, and I, I would have trouble getting here, so.
Yeah, and you said that, so, all the more reason.
Okay. So, uh, yeah, I will, I will also draft an apology letter to RJ and.
Thank you, yeah.
Um, I mean, I guess with that one, I think we'll have to do it when we come, when we come back together, but.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay.
I'd make a motion where you adjourn.
I will second it, despite sharing, yes.
Yes.
In favor?
Justin, yes.
See you in two weeks.
Hope you feel better, Justin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did Amelia get it too?
Not yet.